We'll call the Policy Subcommittee meeting to order. I don't think we have any public comments. So you want to begin with Religious Holy Days?
Yeah, that's on there. I don't know how it got in here, but the reason it's here is that in the third paragraph, it says, "Leave for observance of religious holidays will be allowed for teachers and staff upon application and set a leave to be deducted from emergency/personal days." That's not in line with the contract. It's not in line with any of the old contracts, and it's not in line with the language of the new contract. The new contract follows the Tohhto language. Do you have it in there that she was in there for?
Yeah, I was looking. Boylston Religious Leave may be granted up to two days, absence from school duties without loss of salary, not regularly included in the school calendar if taken, no deduction from the individual's personal or accumulated sick leave.
Yeah, so the...
Five days advance notification.
So the, I would suggest we just put the, you probably have the Tohhto language in there.
It says Boylston.
Okay, well...
Just put this language in there.
Put this language in there, in the Tohhto contract, because that's the, that's the language that we used in the new contract. We took the Tohhto language and used it in the new contract, so we should probably put it in the policy.
Can you just read that?
Each employee may be granted up to two days' absence from school duties without loss of pay for the observance of religious holidays not regularly included in the school calendar. If taken, there will be no deduction from individual's personal or accumulated sick leave. Five days of advance notification to the principal will be required as a prerequisite to the granting of the religious leave.
That is the same as what...
That's the same place. Okay.
So you're saying, put that language in, in place of this third paragraph?
Yes.
The other thing that stood out to me in this... Is in this, in this language, it refers, I think, hopefully, to "religious holidays not regularly included in the school calendar," which is not referenced here. So, "Students whose religious beliefs necessitate absence from school for a particular holy day." It just presumes Christian holidays are all okay, and everybody else needs to submit paperwork and blah, 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 blah. But it doesn't...
It assumes what days are okay?
Christian holidays. It's a sort of, it's this...
Yeah, well, it's probably because of the time, it's probably an old policy, but that's not the case anymore because days like Good Friday...
And Rosh Hashanah, aren't they on the calendar now, or not?
Good Friday is not because it fell during a vacation.
Did we just have Rosh Hashanah off one day?
We do not.
We don't have Jewish holidays off?
No. No, typically, typically schools have only had the Catholic holidays, typically the like Good Friday, those. But those are going away too. And in place of that, they have these things in the contract that says you can take them, and there'll be no deduction from, from your personal days.
But the Christian holidays are built into the school calendar, not all of them. What's not, other than Good Friday, which...
What other ones are, besides Christmas and...
Easter, yeah.
Easter, yeah, but that's always on a Sunday, so... What other ones fall during the week?
I don't think...
Any? Well, Good Friday, Christmas, Christmas Vacation. I think that's the only one now. There may have been more at once, I don't know.
I mean, the expectation isn't for people who are taking... Christmas is off on a, a school, a week. But, so if somebody wants to take Good Friday off, they need to submit a five-day advance notice?
Yeah, we're going to take that out of the, we'll take it out of the calendar. It's been in and it's been out, you know? I've looked at calendars and it's nothing consistent, so... But because we have this in, in the contract, and students can take it off too if they need it, it's just as easy to take it out. And if they need to take it, they can take it with no penalty.
Right.
Because, because then it really applies to all holidays. If you have a holiday and it's some unknown, you know, holiday that you want to take off, you can take it off. You can take it off. I think it just recognizes, you just have that clause in there that just recognizes all holidays that that aren't typically on the calendar, yeah.
Religious.
Well, the religious ones, more than most, we just take them out, you know? And my guess is that one time, there were probably more on these calendars, you know?
I think this, to your point, I think it is general enough that it makes sense to leave that, "Students whose religious beliefs necessitate." Because I don't think it presumes or precludes the Christian calendar from applying.
Okay, I think we just put that language, we just replaced that third paragraph with the language that's in the contract. It covers students, it covers, it covers faculty.
Okay.
You know, I think it's just, and I do think it's general enough that anybody can apply to anybody.
The next topic is reviewing the regional agreement.
So, one thing that I didn't understand about this, when I looked at it, is it says this transition period under Part B. Said transition committee will be in place through the biennial election held in November of 2020. That actually was the biennial election of 2019, was it? No, no. So this committee is still a regional...
It's still considered a transition committee.
Okay, okay, I've got the feeling it wasn't, but...
Until everyone is elected, everybody will go up for election in November of 2020.
Okay, all right. I got the feeling like Cliff wasn't referring to it as a transition committee anymore.
That might be something.
And I don't know if that's true.
Highlight for Cliff. This is one of the reasons it's good to go back and review the language, because sometimes it's, you see something like, oh...
I thought, I thought we'd been talking like the transition committee went to July 1.
To July 1, it just comes?
June 30th, yeah. It says a period, it says a transition period would be in place during January 1 through June 30.
Yeah, that happened, the transition period, but that's not the transition, that's the transition period between being a union and a region to being a full region, so that, that took place.
But the committee, the transition committee goes longer.
Yeah, because there was a transition, yeah, there was a transition committee put in place back in January.
Yeah.
The, so that was put in place during the transition period. Then we fully regionalized and the transition, and all the other committees go away except the transition committee, which stays in place until there's a full election.
Okay.
Which is that November 1.
What is interesting is to see what, what the process will be for replacement of a, it says, "During the transition period," which we're no longer in, "vacancies or expired terms would be filled by the remaining transition committee members." What does that even mean? Not that it's applicable, but...
Yeah, I don't think it is applicable. Were you reading that?
Uh, that's C, under transition period.
Also... Also, I think, is this a contradiction? I can't tell. On the bottom of Page 2 of my document, Transition Period, Number 4, it says, "The transition committee members will serve until the next biennial state election and will assume full jurisdiction effective July 1, 2019."
That's not contradiction.
Well, assume full jurisdiction.
The next biennial state election is 2020, and we did assume full jurisdiction effective July 1.
That was right.
Full jurisdiction, oh, as opposed to, okay, the other committees. I thought it wasn't full jurisdiction until everybody was officially elected.
Someone's got to have jurisdiction, right?
Yeah.
I mean, someone's got to, someone's got to run it. I think they, I think they refer to the fact that they have full jurisdiction as opposed to a board of their committees, a Berlin committee, and then a regional committee.
Right. Is that sound like a camera?
Yeah, I think it's out there. They've been working on this building.
Oh, it sounds like it's from the camera. Okay, so other than those dates, I didn't see anything here that was surprising particularly.
So if a vacancy occurs, the Regional District School Committee shall appoint a member to serve.
Oh, yeah, yes, that's right. Not the selectmen.
Correct. Just, that is different.
Yes, that is different, yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah. One of the benefits of regionalizing.
So...
What's our process for that?
Yeah, I have, I have talked with several potential candidates so far, neither of the two that I spoke with is ready, willing, or able at the moment. Have you had any inquiries or conversations?
No, just the, that third person I was talking to you about.
I did, that, she's one of them that I asked.
Oh, okay.
She, we exchanged the messages and I said, you know, "Let me know if you have any questions," or whatever. And she just kind of left it that she didn't think about it. So, I did not speak with the gentleman we had spoken about earlier.
Okay.
He probably would be interested, but I kind of wanted to see.
Do we need to have a explicit policy for how vacancies are filled and how people are appointed? How, you know, is that a public posting, for example, that there is a vacancy? I would assume we shouldn't be making a public posting that there's a vacancy. But I don't see that we have any process.
I don't think that, I don't know, in the past, were you, were you appointed to a vacancy?
By the selectmen.
Was that publicly posted at all?
I don't know. If it, I think, I think it...
How did you find out about it?
I found out it through a conversation with one of the selectmen at an event. But I think it was posted on Facebook or something prior to that, but I'm not sure. And so I assumed that the word was out, but I don't, I don't really know.
My guess is it'd probably be some kind of ethics involved with, if you didn't make... Because it's a public, and then the committee, I mean, then the committee picks. It's no different than what we have. We have a position open. There's a, we don't have to post it outside, but we do have to post it inside first, so we post it internally.
You never have to, you don't have to post it outside?
Not if we find an internal candidate.
Huh.
There's an internal posting first. So you're not required to, by the ethics laws. And then if you don't find someone there, then you're required to post it outside.
Is this something maybe Cliff should check with the council about?
Yeah.
Do you want to communicate with him, Laurie, or do you want me to?
I'll do that.
And does he then, should he propose some kind of process? I guess is the question before, that, is it go, you know, it's written down, anybody in the future when there's an opening like this, a vacancy, we have an explicit process to guide the committee?
Yeah, I think it's, that's part of the question that Cliff is going to pursue with Ross.
Okay.
You know, what should the process be, how defined should that be? And should that be codified somehow in policy or... It's not your camera?
I think it's coming from up here.
I feel like it's over there, but I don't know.
I do too, I do too. It's a pie.
Have you got an audio system in this one?
It's not something...
No, it's been off.
Well, there's blue lights on one of the things.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're always on. I don't know, I don't know why. Probably recorded by the government or something. But that's a new one, I haven't heard that one before, but I know they've been working on this, so I've heard a lot of things I have never, I haven't heard since I've been here, out there.
I was unclear, just my own background knowledge, of this agreement and this apportionment of capital and operational costs. Are, is language, is there any difference? Any, any changes from the prior agreement about how costs are proportioned particularly?
Not really. That was, that was part of the reason we used the model from, what was that? We use Moncrief Lock. So each town pays for their own, and then they pay for a portion of the students, yeah.
And I think it's similar to, the capital cost apportionment, I think, is built somewhat too from even the current process with assigning the towns a proportion based on their enrollment.
Right, for Tohhto.
For Tohhto.
Yeah.
And that currently, Berlin has a slightly greater enrollment? Did I see that, 51% or something somewhere? Where did I see that?
That would be a change.
Boylston does.
Yeah.
Boylston, oh, no, it does say, will be out. It's K-E-F, Item F, Operating Assessment.
Yeah, yeah, in the middle of the page. So this must be based on the past five years or something?
That probably had to do with, let's see, this is...
It has to do with above minimum contribution, which is a little bit different. And this really was meant, this particular thing was just if there was a district-wide meeting with, if, if the two decided they were going to separate, I think, there had to have, um, there had to be a process of how you would allocate for that first year, because I think the allocation changes after that.
Now, that would make sense, because this is above minimum contribution for, so because Berlin pays less, they would have to, it would have to be allocated, they would have to be allocated a higher amount.
Okay.
This was one of the areas, I think, that changed in, along the way.
Okay, I think this is clear enough. When are our two town meetings, anyway?
May.
Berlin, but do we know, early, it's like the first week of May?
Usually the first.
I think it was the first week.
Yeah, like last year.
Have they scheduled it? Have they brought it up, scheduled it? Oh, they probably did.
I think they have, yeah. Okay, I didn't see anything else that was chucked out, did you?
I'm just looking at it again now, so...
I didn't, I didn't realize that any changes, any amendments to this have to be also approved in addition to the town vote by the Commissioner of Education.
They had to approve this initially, too.
Yeah, and any amendments, too.
Right.
I didn't, I didn't realize that they were involved.
I can't believe that we have...
Oh, this was, this was one piece tonight.
Come a long way.
Yeah, so a lot of work represented in that one document.
Really huge, it goes to Russell Dupre, and he's the one who found the district that was trying to do what we wanted to do,
Ah.
which was to give as much autonomy as possible to the individual towns, to the elementary schools, and still achieve the goals of regionalization. And to be able to come up with, although it's complex, to come up with a method to do that and have it already have been approved by DESI was really huge.
Yeah, see, I'm sure, tons of time.
Bob also did a tremendous amount of work in figuring out the formulas and, and the application of some of the principles from that Greylock agreement to make this one work. And it was complex, it was not a easy process. But he's very strong in that stuff, so, all right.
So this piece here, "Students entitled to attend the regional school district," says, "Should parents, guardians of children in grades K through 5 wish to send their children to schools not in their town of residence but within the district, intra-district choice may be made available contingent upon consistent district policy." Do we have district policy?
I think we, I think we do. That might be one we, we have a policy like that, but I don't, I think we just used, um...
I mean, also says, "Intra-district choice requests will be considered prior to allowing inter-district choice."
Yeah, you know what, I think you have a point there, though. I think that was one of, one of the policies that we were supposed to look at. Because we do have a policy, but I think it has to be updated. So we can put that on the list.
All right, let's find that, I don't know where that would be.
It's, it's...
Means we never had that situation before. So wouldn't it have been, wouldn't it be a new policy?
No, because we have a policy about students who transfer, transfer from one district to another. Because parents have done that before, and I forgot what we've done with them.
Okay.
Because I certainly wasn't here for it, but there is a policy like that.
I think, my recollection of the discussion around this is that the, the purpose of the language here is to not prohibit it, but not to encourage it either. And my recollection of the policy was that it, it may have been at the discretion of the principal or discretion of the superintendent based on what was the best need, best purpose for the student. The, because you notice they talk about additional exceptions may be made for specialized educational programs. So someone from Berlin maybe needs this specialized preschool.
Yeah.
Right, but, but, and that comes afterwards, right? The district policy will address the location of special education programs. But in reading this, the way this is stated...
It says, "May be made available contingent upon..."
Policy.
Yeah.
That's why I just want to, just know, really want to know what that policy is, I guess.
It says, "Be made available contingent upon," it should be inconsistent with district policy.
Oh, gosh, I should probably look at it. Let's just make sure it's...
And there have been, there were examples prior to regionalization.
Yeah.
Where there was a compelling reason that a student couldn't remain at one school and was able to go to the other. Obviously, it's different when you have, when you have one district, the financial piece of that could be. That's the one, that's the one area where you're not seeing this, you know what I mean? Like you're...
Yeah.
You're paying based on enrollment at each of the schools, the towns are paying. If an influx of students from one town went to the other, you'd have to make some adjustments.
Right. And you just, I think the school could have just voted on a policy for, was it special education students, or it's a policy that Karen worked on? That there would be a, there would be a fee. So, I know that there is, but it's not, I don't think it's part of that big a policy.
Okay, so we need to find that and pull that up, just to look at it and make sure it works. Okay, with the way it is. Okay.
So we have reviewed the regional agreement, we have two questions... We have two questions. One is to consult with Russ regarding the process of replacement of members and whether there's a need to codify that in policy. And the second is to look at school policy regarding intra-district transfers.
Are you doing minutes? I just realized.
Uh, those are my minutes.
Okay, good. Yep, good.
Equity goals and policies to support those goals, discussion.
Our, we have a draft of school committee goals, just FYI here, coming up to this next meeting. I just sent them to you and Christie this morning. And the way we frame, we, the fourth goal is an equity goal to kind of dovetail with your efforts, I think, Jeff. And so it says, tenitively, before, you know, for discussion at this next meeting, "The school committee contributes to a shared district focus with the superintendent throughout this next school year to ensure district policies and meeting processes address students' equitable access to learning." Which I'm assuming is your, your focus for equity is, is about access to learning, not, not financial per se. Financial equity is not the issue, right?
Um, I, yeah, no, you're, you're right. You know, the focus is on, the focus really is on being more available. But also, really this year, to look at these policies. And it turns out, um, I asked Christie to look for policies. We don't have any, any policies specifically that look at equity. So I know we're doing things like, you probably heard me ask those teachers a couple of questions about. So, it's not, it's not part of my goal, but we're doing that. So at the school level, they're looking at that right now to see if there's not a better way to make those kind of trips more inclusive. So I, I reworked my goal a little bit. You have a copy of it, there's a copy in the drive, there's a copy there. In terms of the, the equity piece. To have more availability, to look at any policies we have, or to, to help write any policies that we might need around things like field trips or overnight trips. And to be more visible at community events.
How does that relate to equity?
Well, I think that by being, by being more visible, there are people who normally, bless you.
Bless you.
Who normally probably wouldn't come to see me, wouldn't have a chance to come and see me, or voice their opinion, who, if I'm there and make myself available at times when they're available, they will, you know, have more chance to, to talk to me. But also, there's other stuff that's not in this goal, like the one, the thing I just talked to you about, or, the other thing I took out of this goal was the exploring, um, scholarship opportunities for kids who are going on field trips. Which I still plan on working on, but, you know, explorer is not a very concrete word. So, and I wasn't sure how I was gonna do it anyway. So it's something I was just gonna look at this year, and maybe a more concrete goal on it next year that I can say, we're gonna do this, 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 and this. But I'm not far along enough in it to, that I would be able to give any kind of concrete measures that I would use to, because I wasn't even sure where I wanted to go with it. So I know that you and I had talked last year about doing some research on, is there anybody else who, someone's got to face this before. And somebody must have some kind of policies, or some kind of, somebody must have some kind of scholarship fund, or even if it's...
Partnerships of some sort.
Some partnerships, even if they're private. So also, I'm still gonna, I'm still gonna do it. It's just, I didn't have a concrete enough idea on it, so I didn't want to put it in this.
So Christie did a search last year when this came up. But what I'm wondering is, and she, she didn't come up with it.
A search of policies.
But we had sort of directed her, maybe in not the right way. We had said, you know, "Look and see if you can find policies around equity in field trips," or something like that, or equity in sports. The, what I'm wondering is if we really want to ask for sort of a search just on, what are the policies about out-of-school field trips and overnight trips?
Something very specific, you mean?
So that you're just looking at, do they say anything about equity?
Yeah.
Do they, I mean, if you look at...
Well, ours don't, I mean, you think about the amount of, I mean, if you think about the amount of policies we have related to field trips and travel, they're really, the focus on them is safety.
Right.
You know, like you can't drive between this time and this time. You know, you can't drive overnight. You have to have, now it's, you know, you have to have a search. I know we're going through this with the field trips now. They've rented these for years and years. I mean, I, even back when I was taking field trips, we just would rent a van.
Yeah.
Which they're saying really isn't safe now. And there's no law around it, but it's, to me, it's no different than, we talked to Russ about this, it's no different than when they give, they give advisories about, you know, something on a jet, and then all of a sudden one goes down because something breaks, and they say, "Well, we had an advisory." Well, you didn't tell anybody to take it out. You just said, you know, something, this may happen. So, you know, I don't want to wait till it goes off the road and then say, "Well, there wasn't a law about it," you know, so. But most of them are around, most of the ones I've looked at are around safety. I haven't found any.
There is, we do have a policy here called equal educational opportunities. But it's, it's focused primarily on excluding, based on discrimination, really.
Yeah.
On base of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, genetic information, homelessness, physical and intellectual differences, pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions. But the final comment says, "This will mean that every student will be given equal opportunity in school admission, admissions to courses, course content, guidance in extracurricular and athletic activities." So the, the intent is there, but it's framed more as discrimination and not, does not cite economic circumstances, socioeconomic status of some, of any reference like that.
I'm wondering if we couldn't, somewhere down the line, as we work on this, not have a policy that's not, not, you know, that's not so specific that it only applies, some kind of broad policy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think it's...
I haven't seen one like that, that's the...
Well, I...
It's about economic, economic situations.
Yeah, and you know, when you think about it, it's a lot of times the economic situation that prevents someone from having a, a learning opportunity. Or it's a management issue that prevents someone from having a learning opportunity. And you can't do that, you can't equate those. You can't say, "Well, now if you, you get, if you get kicked out of class, you can't go on a field trip."
Right, right.
Right? I mean, you're just, you can't...
Behavioral issues and...
That'd be like, especially if, and that was my point, especially if the trip is part of the curriculum. It's like me saying, "Listen, if you don't, if you get kicked out of class, you can't take the test." Right? I mean, if you said that, the people would be like, "What are you, what are you talking about? They get suspended so they can't take your test."
But the other, I think this is a, this is a really complex issue. Because if you, let's say you look at the policy wording that you just read, and if you incorporate outside learning opportunities, then you're basically saying, we're, we have to guarantee that every student has access to every outside...
Well, sponsored by the school.
...enrichment, learning opportunity that, that the school offers. And what does that look like?
No, not, not every opportunity. Opportunities are part of, of the curriculum. So if it were, if, if you had an enrichment trip, and, and it was just for enrichment activities, then everybody doesn't necessarily have to go on it, because it's not part of what your core curriculum is. If you, if you're, and that's the reason I had that question for. If it's part of the core curriculum, that means you're, it's, it's part of what's required.
To give access to.
Right.
And that means every student, regardless of their financial circumstance, should be able to take advantage of that trip.
No, absolutely, and they should. Unless, you know, so teachers have to think about this. If you're going to, because too often what we do, and I've done the same thing, say, "Oh, it's just part of my curriculum." Well, that gets somebody to sign off and say, "Okay, you can go." But you gotta think about that stuff. If it's part of your curriculum and it's required, that means there's got to be some kind of a follow-up thing, because there's some kind of accountability that goes along with it. And if that's the case, everybody should be able to have access to it. Whereas it's the equivalent of saying, "Everybody's gonna take the test except you, because you don't have the money to." Well, that's, we're a public school, we can't do that. If we're saying, it's an enrichment activity, and you're going out on a trip, it's not part of the core course, it's some extra thing.
Well, this, this is saying... This equal educational opportunities framed around discrimination says, "This will mean that every student will be given equal opportunity in blah, 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 and extracurricular activities."
Well, that says they, they have equal access. That means that, that they can go, that doesn't mean they do go.
No.
Right, I mean, if I say you have access to something, that doesn't, if, if, if you're not able to do it, you're not able to do it, it's not me stopping you from doing it. But I think there's a distinction. I think there's a distinction between that and saying that, than saying it's part of the core curriculum.
Yes, yes, I, I agree with you there, but this, I just go back to this language.
Can you read that?
This will mean that every student will be given equal opportunity for admissions, courses, extracurricular activities.
Yeah, opportunity.
Equal opportunity. If I don't have the money, I don't have equal opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that. But, you know, I don't think we can, I think the difference between having an equal opportunity and equal outcome are two different things. Giving someone an opportunity is different than saying you're gonna have the same outcome as everybody else. I can't guarantee that everybody has the same outcome.
We don't have...
Not, not to that stuff. I mean, I think you should be able to do that with a public school system, so. If it's core curriculum, I think, yeah, you know, you got to. I'm just saying, I think that we, as, as an organization, have to be, have to think more about what's...
Core.
What's, what's required, and then what's the extra piece.
So, the public schools of Worcester do not offer any of this travel, because so, so many of their students could never.
Right, right.
Right? So they must have a policy that says something like that. And I don't think they're unique in large...
Didn't offer any of it? Well, then they probably don't have to have a policy. They just say, "We're not offering it. We just don't have these things."
Well, they might have a policy.
They might, they might. And I would suspect that's true of most large urban districts that have a high proportion of students who are,
Low income.
You know, free lunch, low income. There have been some examples of very blurry lines between what was part of the curriculum, too. Like, I would think back around the, you know, the trip to Hawaii, which...
All right, great, thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Was, you know, there were some educational aspects to that. It was Pearl Harbor, the 50th anniversary. It was history classes going. But it was an incredibly expensive trip. And the kid, it was during school time, which if I were doing that over again as a school committee member, I would not approve, because it left students here in classrooms while they're looking at pictures of their peers out on the beach and...
And without their core instructors.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it was like a really poor decision. So, but that, you could easily make the case that was sort of part of the curriculum, but clearly not every student. I mean, it was, I think it was close to $3,000.
Yeah.
It was crazy expensive.
Yeah, you can't, you can't call that part of the curriculum, unless the school's gonna subsidize kids for $3,000. I mean, you can't have part of the curriculum be based in Hawaii.
Not unless you're gonna, not unless you have, which is what I was talking about, not unless you have established some kind of scholarship fund.
Right.
Where someone can apply for it, and somebody looks at it and says, "Okay, you're eligible to get, you know, $1,500 of that paid for," something like that. Now...
But I don't even think you can, even with that, I don't think you can say, "Part of your curriculum is situated in Hawaii."
No, it has to be...
I think it's a stretch, yeah.
I think that it has to be categorized as something else, whether it's enrichment or just an opportunity.
Right.
If, if you're, if, if you're taking a trip someplace, anyplace, and then part of, you're, part of the course, you know, they have something they have to do, and there's some kind of a grade, which is what happens, then it's not really enrichment anymore. If you're given, because now you, you're, everybody doesn't have access to it. Now, that person can't take the, that test. They can do something else, but they can't take that because they didn't go on the trip. And it's a, it is blurry, but, you know, it's...
You know, I also think about the Cape trips, which are, in my mind, are extraordinary opportunities, because they're multidisciplinary and they do really incredible things. But I think about various barriers that kids would have in accessing that. And one is, it did cost money. It wasn't huge, but it did cost. Secondly, there are kids who socially are not gonna put themselves in that situation, where they're gonna be, you know, on a trip with a bunch of kids that maybe they're not close with, or whatever, and... But if it's part of the curriculum, which I'm not sure that was defined that way.
The Cape trip?
Yeah. Because it's multiple, it was...
Just sorry, I hit you.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. I mean, and also just, you're, you're raising another piece, which has to do with the social-emotional components, where kids are provided, sort of, for lack of a better word, sort of a stable environment in which to learn in the school every day. To go off on a trip overnight someplace could be challenging for any number of kids around social-emotional reasons.
It also gets, starts to blur into that other conversation about teachers not wanting to be responsible for some students who have exhibited behavioral issues, too.
On the home base, right.
So, this is very complex.
It's, it's a good one to tackle, and I, I mean, I think, I think one thing to start, maybe we could start thinking about is this notion of whether it's part of the curriculum. When, when even at the, it seems like it should be in our policy somewhere to differentiate that, that these trips for extracurricular events need to distinguish whether they are part of the curriculum, which is in the school's direct domain, or extracurricular offering.
And I think that's really the most you can do. I don't think as a school system, we can cover, you know, every social ill in the world. I mean, it's just not our job.
No, I understand that.
Right, I mean, there are, you know, there are cases where, you're right, students not gonna put themselves in that situation. Well, you can't not go on a field trip because there's a couple of kids who, who are like, you know, maybe really shy or something like that.
But, but if it was part of the curriculum, if that trip was designated as part of the curriculum...
Oh, yeah, that's the, that's, yeah.
I think you do need to think about how to accommodate those kids.
But you know what I would suggest in that circumstance? I think back to nature's classroom. And I know that there were several students who, that going away for six days, you know, at that age was a challenge.
Yeah.
There were accommodations needed, parents went. So that might be the...
Yeah.
The key is that there's at least an awareness that some kids may need accommodations in order to...
And I also think there's a difference between, like, for example, I had this discussion with Cliff about, like, in elementary schools, when you have field trips and you get a, you know, you have kiddles or run, right? So you, you never know, I mean, they'll run out in the... So, you never know. I mean, they'll run out in the street, they run out of the school class, they run out of the buildings. You can't expect the teacher to, so in those cases, they do stuff like, say, the parent, you know, you have to come.
Or you have a special assistant, special ed assistant.
Right. And you can't always do that because they have other stuff to do, so you know, you look at all the options, but the last one is, you're the parent, you know, your child likes to run out of the building. We can't have them run out.
Out to the streets of Boston.
You know, or in Boston, we can't have them run. So, those are accommodations you make. And I also think if it's, if it's something where someone has some social-emotional issue and then, and that's the reason they, they don't go, that's, you have to, you'd make an accommodation for them. I don't think you'd stop a trip if it's something like that. Because you can't say, I don't think. I mean, I would never ever be a proponent of one kid has some kind of social-emotional issues that we can't accommodate for on the trip, so we don't go on the trip. Because there's always gonna be something like that.
Right.
I think it, I think it covers as much stuff as you can, 'cause eventually, nobody's gonna go on trips. That's what'll happen.
Right. And then everybody's losing.
And everybody loses. And the reality is, you know, people, you know, people move out of some of the urban environments into environments like this, so their children do have different opportunities, learning opportunities. It's the way that works.
I have a very concrete recommendation.
All right.
On what we do.
Filing one, okay, let's go.
I'm finally earning my keep, maybe.
No, not you, I mean all of us.
What if we add an element to the trip approval process right now that for a year, and the part of this is about collecting data, that we ask, include in the process, they have to answer a question about equity. You know, do you see this, first of all, is this trip part of the core curriculum? If this trip is not, or if it is, what accommodations are you making? Or what consideration have you given to the point of equity? And just leave it at that. It's not gonna be, oh, we're gonna disapprove the trip 'cause you didn't do anything about this. But it gives you a year to ask the question, to have people start thinking this way before we dive into policy. Does that make any sense?
That'd be a good, good data collection, I think.
Yeah, I wanna, you know, frame the questions. If we wanna, if we mean students' access to participate in this trip, then we should say that rather than just equity, which can mean a lot of different things to people. But I, I think we need to define this idea of it being part of the curriculum. Like, what's that, what's that mean? Are you, you know, that, i.e. students will be graded on their participation, on their products, their work, their work products? Is that what we mean by that? Or that it's addressing specific standards in the curriculum that are not addressed in the school building? Or all of those things?
Well, 'cause you, you could have, let's see, you could have, you could have an extracurricular activity that addresses the standards.
But, but not in, not exclusively. I mean, usually, you have to address them within the curriculum, within the school instruction to be part of the curriculum. Like, you wouldn't address the curriculum just
Maybe the key then is, oh, a sole, just a sole addressing of that standard. You know what I mean? So...
Not only, you mean?
Yeah.
Is this, or is it addressing standards that, well, that's what I was saying, is it addressing standards that are not otherwise addressed within the school, within the classroom?
Or in addition to. So, if they, if they, if they're addressing the standard in this classroom, but then they're addressing them outside, then that would be more of an extracurricular, it's a supplemental. You know, maybe that's the key word, the supplemental part. Is this supplemental standard? Is this a supplement to the standards or?
Or to the curriculum, classroom curriculum.
Yeah. And by that, we could put, you know, sort of define what supplemental means.
Yeah, I could ultimately see there being a, you know, in the application for a trip, there's a question that says, is this trip part of the curriculum? But defining what that means as far as therefore every student will be expected to go, right?
To, yeah, to...
Or you have to have a plan of how you're making that up for students who cannot go.
Maybe that's the other part of the field trip, that if it's a, if it's a field trip that's that's part of the curriculum, there's an expectation that everybody goes.
Well, I'm just thinking, some teachers have said, if they can't go, we're gonna give them this packet of materials and activities to do here in the school while we're gone. They're gonna go to the virtual sites online and do the same products, but they're gonna do them in school.
But that, to me, speaks to an enrichment activity. Here's your way of doing an enrichment activity and somebody else gets another way to do it. So, we could all have three different enrichment activities for the same thing. That's an enrichment, that's not.
Well, I could see them saying, no, that's because it's part of the curriculum, so I can't let them not learn from this even though they can't go, so I'm gonna require that they learn from it on site.
And I would say if it's part of the curriculum, then then, in that case, you would have to have equal opportunity and access to that.
That's correct.
Right?
Yeah. So, I'm wondering maybe, Jeff, if you might wanna draft the language for this and bring it to the, it's actually procedural, but I think because it's, we're collecting information to inform policy, if you might wanna bring language, what would this, what would teachers be asked to? What's the data that we're gonna collect and bring that language to the next policy meeting?
There's really two different issues we're getting at here too. One is defining whether a trip is part of the curriculum, and if it is, what does that mean? That means everybody has to go. That means there's some accountability, right? There's a test, there's some product that they're demonstrating, right? As part of the curriculum. And then there's gotta be a plan for those people who can't go, for whatever reason. So, that's one issue, but the second issue is the equity piece. Okay, now you've defined this as part of the curriculum. Everybody has to be giving, be given that equal opportunity to go. How are you gonna fund that?
Yeah. So, then the default is going to be that people define any trip as extracurricular.
Which I think will be, what happens.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
So, then equity, is that, I mean, then equity falls off the table?
No, because I, I still feel that extracurricular opportunities still need to have some equity piece.
And it's listed here as part of the Massachusetts Equal Education Opportunities Law, where it concludes, this will mean every student will be given equal opportunity, including extracurricular activities.
Well, you know, I think, I think what it does is it, it just helps teachers just be straightforward with this. I think, you know, we, and I know this from teaching, you know, you have to go put a dog and pony show on to get this thing approved. So, what do you do? You go, well, it's part of the curriculum, it's this and that. And then, then the principal signs off because the superintendent's gonna say to the principal, why are you letting them go? Well, it's part of the curriculum. And then, the school committee's gonna say to the superintendent, what about these? Well, they're part of the curriculum, so, you know, you, it's not, this is, you guys are gonna stay out of this. Right? So, it goes right up the chain. So, what happens at the bottom? You put the teacher in this position where they have to. So, at least, if it's, if it's an enrichment, we let them say it's enrichment. And you say, well, now they're gonna say it's all enrichment. Why can't make an argument that most of them, they are?
Yeah.
You know, 'cause an enrichment can have, can be a learning experience and still be
Right, absolutely.
So, we're still back to, it's enrichment, but is there equity in the enrichment piece, right?
Yeah, I still don't wanna lose...
Almost all of them, I think, I mean, I can't think of...
No, they, it would have to be because your, your learning has to be, be able to be, the curriculum standards are written for you to be able to teach to them in the classroom.
Yeah, or somewhere around there at least.
Yeah, close by.
Yeah. So, most of them are enrichment. They have, they have a learning component, but I think we, we have a lot of teachers now to be more honest about this and say, well, look, it is enrichment. And enrichment's good. Enrichment's good for everybody. You know, how do we get more kids involved in the enrichment thing? 'Cause if we're saying, well, if it's enrichment, then you can go on a trip or you can do a packet. Well, you know, there isn't...
That's not equity.
Well, you know, if you're saying, if you're saying everybody can go, but the trip's $8,000.
Right.
Well...
The reality is...
The reality is, you're not even given the opportunity because, and so that's the, for me, you know, I mean, it's...
Yeah. Yeah. I do think the first piece of this is to get us all thinking on the same page and to start to use the right language.
So, what?
This is not part of the curriculum. This is enrichment.
Right.
That's, that's the first thing. So, let's get all clear about that piece so teachers don't have to defend it as part of the curriculum.
That's right, sure.
It is part of an enrichment or a learning opportunity that extends beyond and enhances the curriculum. So, your second question, Lori, was what consideration, you know, is this part of the curriculum? Or is it supplementary? And what consideration have you given to students equitable access? So, I still think that that question may be relevant. I'm not sure we need to ask, is it part of the curriculum? I think we just
Yeah, maybe this initial thing is really...
This is not part of the curriculum.
Yeah.
We, I mean, as a leader in the district...
Well, curriculum related, I mean, I think you can easily say it's an enrichment. Well, if our enrichment activity is not curriculum related, then it's busy work.
Yeah.
You know, so that, but I can see how that definition does apply in terms of extracurricular inequity. 'Cause then you, 'cause then this is right back to what we're saying. All right, it is, it is an extracurricular, but there's still an equity issue. So, we got them to the point where they can be honest about what it really is.
Yeah.
Right? So, okay, a field trip's as enrichment. But is it, is there an equitable piece where, is it still the same if a kid goes to the, to a zoo and the, or is he just take a book and look at pictures of animals? And then writes something? Is that, is that an equitable experience?
No.
So, does it, I, in my head, I keep seeing this as almost, if we're gonna try to embrace both concepts here, that there's a checkbox that says, this is part of the curriculum, and then in parentheses, it's, what is your plan to fund all? Like, how can you ensure that everyone can go? And what is the accountability? What is the measurement that students are gonna be held accountable for some learning goal coming out of that?
That's part of, if it's part of the curriculum.
Correct. The second checkbox is extracurricular. And then the question is, what thought or plans do you have regarding the equity of the opportunity?
Yeah, I think that...
Scholarships, fundraising, something else, sliding scale, you know, what?
Might be a good way to just see what their ideas are.
Don't give them examples.
For collecting information.
Yeah, well, their ideas, as opposed to, you know, three people or even a leadership team saying, oh, you could do this. Maybe they have better ideas on how to...
The only thing I'm a little afraid of is that we're gonna get, you know, when people are filling out these forms to submit, it's like, get it done. So, we may get these generic, kinda catch base and responses everybody starts to use and it's not really informative. I think we could just as well get good info, and we have gotten some good information from the principals describing what the strategies have been.
I think what I observed when we brought this up, one of the teachers, one of the faculty's reaction was, you know, I'm part of the pull you, pull yourself up by the bootstrap school and they should just go get a job. And I'm sitting there thinking, okay, that's, you know, that's indicative of some attitudes that you, I mean, maybe part of this process of asking the open-ended question is, you'll get a sense of where people are at around this and their understanding of what does this mean? Because clearly, there are many young people who may be working to support their families. They can't just go get a job to go on a Hawaii trip or any other...
I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask these questions, see what we get and say it's a one-year
Yeah.
point.
And in the meantime...
I don't know if that's enough time, but most of the trips for this year are already applied for, so this is really an issue about next year's planning.
I think the big ones are, I mean, the Cape trip is already gonna prove. Usually they get proved in the spring for the fall, so they've all been done.
So, there'll be some
There'll be some spring ones coming up.
Coming up in the spring for the future. That's the other piece that is a big part of this in my mind. And it's, it's a step in the equity direction is if they plan far enough ahead that families can plan ahead.
Yeah.
You know, it's when that Hawaii trip was a last-minute thing and families had to come up with the money all at once, which just made it even more
Yeah, right.
challenging for people.
I like the approach of gathering information. I think we might have, there might be multiple ways to do that. And it may be that, maybe, Jeff, you could gather in a leadership meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of doing. I'll have it on the agenda for leadership meeting and...
Yeah. And just, you know, see how, what are the attitudes in the building and what are the strategies that people have used or might consider, you know, thinking more about going forward? Just get, get some, get some perspective, if they are on top of their building.
Well, they certainly have a better feel for it than I would or you would.
Right, right.
You know, they deal with it.
I think too, it would be important to note that the policy subcommittee's goal is not to eliminate these trips.
Right, yeah.
You know, we definitely...
Or just discourage them, you know, 'cause I don't wanna do that. I mean, I don't want them to think, okay, now I gotta go do the song and dance and so forget it. 'Cause that's what'll happen.
Right.
Well, and I just wanna be honest for what it is. It's not really part of the curriculum. It's an extracurricular thing. That's fine with me.
Well, it's great.
Yeah, it is great, that they would even, 'cause they, you know, it's a lot of time on the part of the teacher to prepare this stuff, yeah. And that's just, and that's not even the difficult part, is, you know, if you have ever taken kids
Yes.
to, you know, a city to just watch all these, you know, little ducklings and make sure they don't, they don't do something. So, I applaud teachers for still doing, especially now, you know?
Yeah.
This was a lot easier 20 years ago to do this stuff, so I will...
So, you're gonna bring to leadership agenda?
Yeah, I'll bring it up. We got a meeting coming up.
You might also ask them, you know, these are the questions, these are the questions we were thinking about adding to the field trip forum to get information this year. What do you think of these?
Yeah, are we gonna, am I gonna have to get a copy of those pretty soon? Okay, I'll get those pretty soon. And I'll give them a copy of those too and talk to them about that and then...
I actually like the way you worded it though, so I might, I might ask if you wanna share how you plan to do this.
The, the two questions?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't, I scratched notes, but I, I'll see if I can jot those back to you, whatever, see if I can come up with something. The other, the other piece of this to me that I think, I'd like to circle back around, maybe we can keep this on the agenda for a while, is, is equitable access to learning, are field trips the only thing we should be thinking about? I'm thinking about, are there other circumstances where this may be an issue? Are there school events, for example, where families have to pay? I'm thinking, for example, I know a school, they have school auctions, PTO has school auctions. They, students produce a product from their classroom and it goes up for auction. And only the wealthiest parents in the school ever walk away with that prize. Whereas other schools sometimes take those same objects and they sell them by, by tickets. and you have equal access to that thing because you bought a roll of tickets or whatever. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if there are other equity, and that's, that's totally a stretch out where maybe school policy is irrelevant, but there may be other things that are financial.
Yeah, in my mind, the other big area is athletics.
Athletics is another big area. And then there are smaller sort of classroom or school-based things that cost money or for fundraising purposes, also create or emphasize this divide between the haves and the have-nots kind of scenario.
One of the things about the scenario you just shared is I'm a fundraiser, that's my job. And the principle of fundraising is, first of all, what are you raising the money for? You're raising the money for that everyone can benefit.
Yep.
Right? So the equity of that is in the benefit from those funds raised. To somehow create structures that create equity across what people can contribute really is the antithesis of fundraising. It's like saying, let's assess everyone $50 instead of saying, Susan, you're capable of making a gift of $5,000.
Yeah.
Jeff's only capable of making a gift of $50. As a fundraiser, I understand that and I'm not going to ask everybody to give $50.
No.
I'm going to ask you for $5,000 because you have that capacity. So to, I'd hate to create an artificial limitation around how people are doing the fundraising such that you end up diminishing the proceeds that affects everybody.
Yeah, I think the difference in this example was that it translated right back into the classroom in the sense that the kids would show up back at school the next day and talk about whose family got these great prizes that the classrooms had worked hard on. And the same kids who could never afford to have these things, and parents don't even go because they knew they couldn't afford these things, they have to come into the classroom each day and listen to their peers talk about, I, we got the, we had to bring it home every year they would. So it translated back in those circumstances where the kids were producing something and then they had to hear about the next day who received those things. It's not quite the, it's as particular to a certain kind of fundraising project.
But we're not doing that.
I don't know, but it's an opportunity to do that.
You know, and I think, again, I mean, this is a, the reason I'm always concerned about this is because we're a public school. If we're a private school, then, you know, that's the way it goes. So we're a public school and we're, we're funded by the public, so people should have, you know, equal access to this stuff. At the same time, I think we have to realize that some people, some people have more money than other people and that's just the way it goes and, and I don't think we're, it's not, I mean, we can't control all of that. And, you know, you certainly can't take from someone who has it at the expense of someone who doesn't. So there's, you know, I think we try to do what we can, always realizing that those kind of things are going to happen and I don't, like, those, they come in with different clothes. You know, I mean, you can't, I mean, be like saying, okay, we're all gonna.
Wear uniforms.
Wear your own, which I like, but.
Actually, I do too.
Yeah, yeah, I've done some research on that with, with, well, actually with kids and it's some.
And what's the reaction?
You know, I'll tell you what, the, the kids who come, especially the females I've interviewed, who wear the most expensive clothes and the most trendy, are the ones who most want the, the uniform. That's my experience and I interviewed hundreds of kids, literally, and it was those kids. And I, the question was, well, why is that? Because you always look like, you know, you just stepped out of some fashion magazine. Says, you know, this is a lot of stress. I gotta, now, once you start it, you gotta, now you always gotta look like this and you always gotta compete now. And so that is a kind of a pressure that's put on kids, so those are the ones.
And that is a form of equity, really, that you remove the visual.
Those are the ones who would want, who wanted the most just to be, you know, give me a uniform, you know, I'll, I'll fix it up a little, but just give me something to wear every day that I don't have to go through this.
Yeah.
You know, so we don't realize the stress on kids that, like those kids especially because, you know, the kids are coming with just jeans and they, you know, it's like, they don't care and that's the way they do it. They don't, they're not, they're not dressing to compete, you know, so I think, you know, we talk about all these other inequities and that we don't realize this stuff is just inherent to that, that age that we, that we, 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 we let go because we don't want to face the battle of, of, well, we're going to have uniforms, you know? Because that is a battle, it's a public battle, but, you know, that would, that, just in that kind of stuff saves a lot of issues.
In your conversation with the leadership team around equity, could you also build in a question about, are there other ways that you see equity crop up in terms of being problematic for access to learning or functioning around learning? And, you know, cite off some examples, you know, what, places where there are other costs in the classroom. It may not be a field trip, maybe something else. It may be PTO activities or could be uniforms. You can put them all, I mean, I wouldn't, I can imagine a conversation being derailed by talking about uniforms because you just go right off of that.
It's like the third rail, let me tell you.
But, you know, somebody may say, this is, this is a big issue in, at our grade level. Clothing is a big issue and there, there are a lot of tensions that erupt because of clothing status. But I, I wonder if you could just gather a little bit of perspective about whether there are other areas where equity and financial issues.
I will. If you think of any other questions like that, email them to me next week or so and I'll put them together. Or if you want to reformat a question or something like that, let me know and I'll, I will be very interested to hear what the, what the leadership team has to say.
All right, so this will be on the agenda again next time and this, and new information will be in.
Yeah, I'll bring you some stuff up, but I, I think this is worth keeping on. This is a conversation we, I don't think you get done with this in one or two, one or two meetings.
So I'm anticipating being part of this discussion for maybe one more meeting. Do we have thoughts about who else on the school committee might be interested and engaged beyond this committee?
We don't, we haven't had that conversation. I do think that this is a good committee for newcomers to be on in the sense that you become familiar or begin to become familiar with policies that are behind and that's a major part of our work. So in that sense, I would think someone like Keith might be a good candidate. Or anybody new, you're replacing potentially, but Keith at least has had some grounding for a year and maybe is ready to get into this, so that'd be.
I think, I think a new person too, I, I think that's a good point, someone who's new, that's a good way for you to learn.
Yeah.
And they come at it with a very fresh.
Yeah.
Right, that's right. Um, it just made me think of something.
I know, you said that about this goal because of this part.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it comes from when I was working, I had to take that part out. I mean, I was saying about the equitable thing with parent access, but that was part of, that was when I had this other part in the goal related to what we're talking about now.
Yep.
So.
We also need a process somehow, I don't know, that, I think Christie may have done a scan of these policies with Word Equity or something. And I feel like we should, we need a process to go through these more methodically to see where equity issues may be important in existing policies.
Well, there's a, there's also a, you could use the listserv to ask a very explicit question.
Yeah.
Like, does your, does your district offer overnight trips, you know, something?
I think Christie, I think Christie called the MASC and asked them. But if she didn't, they usually have, does any kind of policies that are unusual, that are different than what they norm, because mostly it's a boilerplate, right? Everybody has the same. They come from the MASC.
That's true.
But when there's ones that aren't like that, they usually have them. So maybe she did not call. I'm, I'm making the assumption that she did.
I don't know. Or, or what we asked her to ask was so specific that it's sort of, nobody was using those exact words or.
Do you have a listserv for MASC, for, just school committees? Do you guys have that?
We have division, divisions.
Do you have like a, like a, something you could put something out of the school committee?
I think we do, I think Angela, there's like a Facebook page for Division Four, for example, to post there. There's not a very low activity page. I'm wondering if there is like, like, we, we take something like the student section of the, or the instruction section, for example, of policy manual and somebody, of course, the student section is huge, but, you know, for each meeting, somebody is responsible for going through some portion of those and saying, do I see any equity zones here that we should be bringing up?
I wonder if it should start the other way where, you know, Jeff's going to ask questions at the leadership group. I'm wondering if we should identify potential areas of concern and then look at policy rather than just looking for stuff in policy.
Yeah, I agree. It's tough to look at a policy. Tough to, tough to look to a policy for, for, you know, an undefined issue. As opposed to you have the issue and then you go see, let me see if I have a policy that does that.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking about the language of what we already have and whether it's, I mean, you know, you can have an overarching equity policy that overlays all of these or, and/or these individual policies may have language that overlooks or conflicts with our ideas about equity.
Let's see, I'm, I'm most interested, from my point of view, I would be most interested in what are the activities, the behaviors, the examples that are happening and then go to policy and say, does, are we not following policy? Does a policy not explicitly address this? Because I think the tedious process of looking at every policy doesn't tell us what's happening in the school that's really of concern.
Okay, well, that, that's fine, so then we have to get really specific information from people, so let's see what you come back with about where people think. You know, it might be another question is, you know, what policies do you think the subcommittee should be reviewing as we think about this issue?
Or are there any policies that you've seen that we have that.
Or need to develop or something.
Another, and this is opening a huge can of worms, you know probably from the news in Worcester that there's also a huge equity concern about disciplinary action. Is it, you know, is it biased and do we look at data that way in our district?
Yeah.
In terms of suspensions or.
Right.
Other disciplinary actions.
Yep, and that ties right into the field trip policy actually because people are trying to extend some of that thinking.
That's a good zone to actually look at, I think.
I've seen a lot of, I've seen a lot of data in terms of discipline, equity in, in boys, disproportionately. Well, just in general, I mean, they, they don't.
Also black, black boys.
Yeah, but we don't have a lot of minorities, so, I mean, so specifically with.
I'm sorry, just to finish that thought, even though you don't have many doesn't mean you don't look at that issue.
Yeah.
You could have five black boys who already are disproportionately punished for behaviors in schools.
Yeah, that's true. It's not the case, but I think in general, boys, no, I don't think this, this is, this is true, that they, this is all statistics, I mean, they don't, they don't attempt suicide more, but they kill themselves more, they get suspended more, they go to jail more, and that all starts in schools.
Right, yeah.
It's a really good point.
Actually, it's a really good book. I have it here, it's called Wargeds Boys, it's an old book, there's been a couple of them like that, you read the statistics on them.
There was a really good speaker at MASC a few years ago when Angela and I went and it was specifically looking at black boys, but it was really powerful to look at.
It's very disturbing.
The, the messaging that starts at such an early age, it's, it's very concerning.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I, I, so that, that has questions, so one question there is, to, to what extent do we look at equity issues? Do we look at data around student discipline?
Student graduation rates.
And graduation rates.
Look at a.
To understand equity issues that, that extend into these subgroups, even though we have small subgroups that don't necessarily have state-level data, but we have internal data that can tell us about these things. Do we use it, to what extent, in what ways?
I think these conversations become more pragmatic as we have more school choice students here too.
Yeah, or, you know, like, I think Berlin, for example, they're building a lot of housing to, or rentals, you know, one and two-bedroom rentals. You know, so you, you don't know who's going to rent, you know, so, you know, that can change the demographics and you really, it makes these kind of policies and this kind of attitude sorts of stuff even, even more important. But, you know, it's interesting, if you go to, I've been to, you know, dozens and dozens of high school graduations, look at the first couple of rows of kids for the Honor Society, almost always girls.
Yeah.
Right?
That was true, that was true too.
It's always true.
Yeah, that is interesting.
So we're primarily looking at input next month, right, when we come back?
And the idea of, you know, sharing with them, yes.
Well, that's partly feedback. We wouldn't implement that till we get their response to that, right?
Yeah, and can you send me those questions?
Yeah, I'll see if I can come up with something.
Okay, because I'll include those as part of, you know, if, if we're going to have some questions on the field trip forum or the, the policy part of the forum.
Yeah.
I think.
Do these questions make sense or should they be different?
And I think one of the things that we want to do is approach this not as a, I mean, we're not looking to be critical of what the school has or hasn't done in the past. I think we're just trying to look to the future and really develop policies that sort of fit what we're saying are the values. And, you know, I could see that people might react that this is, we're, we're somehow criticizing practice or policy.
Yeah, no.
And, and that's not the intent at all. It's just to say, how do we move the culture?
No, and that's a good point, because I, I certainly don't want to discourage field trips, I think they're great. But again, I just want, want teachers to be able to be honest and forthright and not have to do this whole dance around them. And then to look at, take an honest look at these issues and make sure everybody has these, this equal opportunity and access to, to what we offer, you know?
Yeah.
Just that simple. I mean, it's not geared to, you know, to criticizing anybody's practices.
I think another.
So I think that's a good point.
Another part of equity too is there, for a teacher who says, I want to do this trip because of this educational reason or whatever, maybe there are different destinations that have very different price tags that could accomplish that same objective.
Right, yeah, right. I think that's actually a great question to include. Is there, just to have people think about this, I don't know if it's useful, but is there another way to accomplish the objectives of this trip in a more cost-accessible way, for lack of a better.
Cost-effective.
Yeah.
All right, I will write up what I have, Susan, you'll send me the wording on those.
Yeah, kind of massage on the work.
Can we set another meeting right now?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, yeah, last part of the, last part of the agenda, I think we did talk about it. I think we just didn't come to a decision on what we're gonna do with those. Have we taken, have we taken all of those out and put them in a separate school committee book? That's a separate, these R and E policies, do you want them put in? If this were me, I would, I would, as a school committee member, I would say, I wouldn't want to get rid of them. I'd put them in another, into another...
District.
Or like a reference book, you know, like a school committee reference book.
In that case, didn't you say before that if it was set up that way, the school committee would have to approve them?
If it's yours, that's right. Yeah, we could put a district reference book.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that's what we had voted on before.
No, you're right about that.
Didn't we vote on that already? I thought we voted on this. I was surprised to see this back here.
Yeah, Christie said we didn't. I can make sure, or maybe we can ask her.
Well, let's vote again.
Okay.
So do we agree that we move those policies and put them in a district reference book?
They're not policies, they're...
They're procedures.
Procedures and examples.
Okay. Move them and put them in a district reference book.
Right, which school committee can access as needed.
Do we agree?
Yes, that's a motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good thing you have a qualm today.
I walked in, I'm like, whoa, how come there's only two of us here? Not that there ever would be other school committee members, but, okay, so...
There's an old line for this committee.
I don't know. I have to tell you, I have really enjoyed this committee.
I've learned a lot from this.
I do too. And it just is a very interesting way of looking at the schools and sort of thinking about how do you apply philosophy to actual policy? Okay, so next meeting dates, somebody wants to...
So we have nothing that we're reporting, bringing to the committee, oh, with the holy days?
The religious days.
Religious days.
We, I think we could also bring the fact that we reviewed the regional agreement.
Yep.
And we could report on our discussion. We're not asking for any action. We just might be sharing with the group that we're doing sort of a fact-finding process.
Yeah, yeah. Also, you have a couple of items for Cliff. And he may, he may want to report on those. We may want to hear from him around those things. Yeah, in fact, we need to square away the vacancy issue, for example.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a number of things to put on the agenda for...
Are you going to the MASC? Because that leaves out the first week in November. You're not?
I'm not. I wish I was. It's really good. It's a really good conference. I always enjoy going.
It's just the beginning. Maybe there's another time in October we want to meet.
When do you have your leadership?
Yeah, I was just thinking of that.
Yeah.
Little muffin morning at 19:00. Sorry about the importance of that. Let's, must be the last week. Senior luncheon, like that too.
That's today?
Next week. October leadership, the 15th.